The Gladstone City Council will now meet in executive session. You are going to ORS 192.6602A. Consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Many high representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room and are respectfully requested to do so now. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed in deliberations that occurred during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes, without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, for example, planning commission members, library board members, et cetera. City staff and volunteers, members of the public, and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal council is discussing matters with the council is not intended to, nor does it pay the attorney-client interest that attaches to those limitations and any related documentation. In the final decision on any matters necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much.
I'm going to stop the recording.
Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. We have a long agenda tonight, kind of a four-part meeting. The first part began at 5:30 with an executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and that has been completed. This meeting, the City of Gladstone, has a vitamin A guideline set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in-person and virtually, using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions were printed on the meeting agenda. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in-person, they were to have emailed their comments or their requests to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals in person, attending in person, may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting, and I'll extend that to prior to the consent agenda consideration. We have a little presentation. If anybody came and didn't know you needed to fill out a card, I'll give you some grace on that. And then the city will also, oh, comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, once again, you were to have emailed your request to the city recorder. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder, and comments are, again, limited to three minutes. We will have the first part of our meeting will be our consent agenda, and then we will move on to regular agenda. Oh, the first item actually will be a presentation from Clackamas County. So it's sort of four parts, and so buckle up. We're in for a long evening, I think. We will, I'll ask city recorder to do the roll call, and then we will have our flags.
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flags. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting tonight with a presentation from representatives of Clackamas County and Home Forward on Tuck Willa Springs. Shannon Callahan, Director of Housing and Community Development. If you come forward and if you'd like to introduce other people that are here with you, push the button on the microphone and it will stay on, and you'll probably be heard best if you kind of pull it toward the person doing the speaking. There you go.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Shannon Callahan, and I am the Director of Housing and Community Development Division at Clackamas County. And I also wear another hat, which is that I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And now I'd like to turn it over to my co-presenter, Adam Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Adam Brown. I am the Deputy Director of Clackamas County's Health, Housing, and Human Services Department. Thank you. Mayor, in terms of the order of operations, we talked with the chief a little bit earlier, and he indicated he was going to do a little bit of setup, so I'm not sure if you want us to jump in or if we want to defer to the chief?
No, that's fine. I wasn't, I wasn't in on just what order you all planned to do it, so if that's what you've agreed on, chief, we'll be glad to hear from you first.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. These members are here today at the council's request to get an update about Tuck Willa, specifically based on the, you know, the calls for service, the volume, which was significant, and some other calls that were represented in our monthly report of discharging of firearms, menacing dog bites, and overdoses. The police department and county officials continue to meet and try and overcome challenges that we face at Tuck Willa, and we're going to continue to do so. These incidents at the facility, although difficult to investigate for us, we're working through challenges there also, and their rules. And there has been some movement forward as it continues to move on. I think it's important that I allow them to give the presentation, and then we can just follow up with questions of them or myself.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Chief Schmerber. So, Mayor, council members, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Clackamas County values its partnership with all 16 cities in Clackamas County, and we've, we've made a lot of progress together as a community over the last couple of years. And in large part, that's because of the relationships that we have with our cities, and so we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We understand that operating facilities like Tuck Willa Springs can be a challenge. It has an impact on the community, and you have our commitment to have honest dialogue about the pros and cons of those impacts, both the, you know, the positive impacts and some of the challenges, including the things that the chief mentioned. But we just appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about that. So Tuck Willa Springs, as you know, was opened in the summer of 2022, and it is a 48-unit affordable housing development that delivers permanent supportive housing. Shannon's going to talk a little bit about our program design and what permanent supportive housing means, but in short, it's our community's tool for supporting individuals who are really vulnerable. People who are extremely low income, have one or more disabling conditions, and have a long history of homelessness. It's people who struggle to maintain stable housing on their own and need a lot of supportive services to maintain stable housing. And so this is a really important asset in our community for dealing with chronic homelessness and giving people a safe, stable place to live. The last time that we were here was on November 22nd, 2022, just a little over two years ago. And the last time that we were here, it was about four to six months after the site opened. And you all probably remember that we had somewhat of a challenging settling-in period when the site opened. I think we probably didn't have the level of staffing out of the gate. We had, you know, 48 people learning to be in new neighbors with one another and learning to be in new neighbors with our community. And the settling-in period was a little bit hard, and we came here to talk about that. We set regular meetings with Chief Schmerber, who's been a really tremendous partner to look at the call volume and try to work with Home Forward, our service provider at the site, to, how can we really work together to address some of the, some of the impacts that the site was having on the community? I think we were really successful in the months that followed. In early 2023, I think we got through that settling-in period, and then we did have a series of, I think, six to 12 months where things were going pretty well there. There were still, you know, there's a little bit of call volume, there's a couple of people that are particularly high needs at that site that do make calls to 911 fairly regularly. We worked with CCOM, our Behavioral Health Partners, Chief Schmerber, to come up with ways for managing that, but we had a pretty good stretch there. And then, as I'm sure you've observed, over the last maybe eight months or so, there have been a series of incidents there that have been really unfortunate. Beyond that, there's a couple of dangerous situations. There was a dog bite that resulted in an injury to a child, which is something that we can't have in our community, right, to the extent that we can control it. So I think we understand we're here in that context. We have redoubled a lot of our efforts to lean back in with the chief, back in with Home Forward, put some specific plans in place to address some of those concerns, but I just wanted to open with that and acknowledge some of those challenges. And we're open to talking, to hearing from you additional concerns you might have in areas of interest for you. But I want to give Shannon an opportunity to talk a little bit about the program itself, and then we'll leave plenty of time for questions with all of you.
Thank you. I am also advancing my slides, which is hard for me sometimes to read and do slide and advancing at the same moment, but we thought it was really important to talk with you about how we define success at Tuck Willa Springs for our residents and for the larger community. I think one of the things that we, as Adam indicated, we have been working on is making sure that we are adaptable, flexible, and responsive to the needs that our residents are facing, but also the needs that our partners are facing, and our partners include Gladstone Police Department and what their experience has been, and how we can change our response at Tuck Willa Springs to meet law enforcement's needs to help keep community safety. Obviously, a huge priority of ours is ensuring the housing stability of our residents. As Adam indicated, we have 48 households living in Tuck Willa Springs who require services, wraparound services, which we provide onsite at Tuck Willa Springs to help them maintain their long-term housing stability. And then our priority is making sure that we have a safe community for the residents who live there and for the surrounding community, and these are really how we look at defining success for our operations at Tuck Willa Springs. So our approach has really been one of collaborative problem solving. Before I started working for the Housing and Community Development Division, there were regular and reoccurring meetings with Gladstone Police Department, and in particular, the chief, every single month, which has been a tremendous gift of the time of the chief to be able to troubleshoot and talk through incidents that law enforcement has been responding to. As Adam mentioned, we are privy, through our Behavioral Health Department at Clackamas County, to be able to look at CCOM data, and we do that with the chief so that we're able to talk through what things may have been occurring and kind of see these natural trends. And we have seen a trend that started over the, over the summertime and have been adapting and changing to be responsive. So before the, kind of this latest change that we've talked about in an uptick in law enforcement callouts, some of the things that we worked on to kind of adapt at the beginning of the infancy of Tuck Willa Springs is we added a new behavioral health team focused on acute individual challenges. Now, when I say we've added that, what that means is we have funded that team. We have not been able to fully operationalize that team, but it is something that we expect. Once it gets started, we'll be in addition to help the residents at Tuck Willa Springs. While we do not have a 24-hour property management presence, we do have 24-hour staffing onsite at Tuck Willa Springs. We have security officers there from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM daily. And at the other times, the building is staffed with a myriad of folks from our two providers who work onsite. Those are our supportive housing services providers, which are Home Forward and NARA, and our property manager, which is Home Forward. We also have been lucky enough to have been able to increase our communication with Gladstone Police Department of late. The chief brought the responding sergeants to a conversation, I think it was about two months ago, if I remember correctly, so that we could hear how the real-world operations were going when your officers are responding so that we would understand what things we need to adapt to help them be quick and efficient and get the information that they need. So in the spirit of problem solving, we're also implementing a few new things. One of the, one of the recent requests that has come up is some of the neighbors to the east of the property have been having issues with folks coming along the side of the property down to the LDS church. And one of the things that we've realized is that we needed to do a better job fencing to help stop any foot traffic and creating kind of a nuisance for neighbors in their backyards. So we are proceeding with that fencing, which will help keep the residents more secure, but also help with any kind of foot traffic that may go on and bring folks into the parking lot. That work is now scheduled for the end of January, and we expect that to be complete in February. We have also, in response to some of the recent incidents, used our lease enforcement power when we have had security issues. What that essentially means is we've issued evictions when it is appropriate and when we are legally allowed to do so. And we, we balance very carefully the housing stability and ability for our residents to cure or change behavior. But we, we take our commitment to safety of our residents and community very seriously, and when there have been serious incidents, we've moved forward with 24-hour eviction notices. As I mentioned, the increased communication with the law officer, law enforcement officers that were responding was really instrumental in us figuring out that there were some challenges when they were responding and getting information about the residents and who were residents, who were visitors, how they could enforce trespass and exclusions. And we have confirmed that we are able to provide basic information from our rent rolls to responding officers, and those rent rolls are now available with our security guards so that they can provide that information on the spot to both keep law enforcement safe, make sure chief could expand on why they need this more than I, but to make sure that they're doing the appropriate response. And we have done a myriad of other changes in our service model. I won't, I won't belabor all of those, but we have engaged in about eight different items that we have heard from the chief, from your officers, and our, and the neighbors to make changes in how we're approaching Tuck Willa. And I, we want to leave a lot of time for you to be able to ask us questions and have a dialogue. But I did want to share with you a couple of things that I think are successful about our statistics at, and our partnerships at Tuck Willa Springs. One of those is we have an amazing retention rate. What that means is that people who come to live at Tuck Willa stayed to live at Tuck Willa, and we're stabilizing them after literal years on the street. We have a 90, over a 95% retention rate at Tuck Willa Springs, which is really a great number considering the challenges that folks have faced when they come in to live there. And I think one of the things that is so impressive about what we've, what the community has done to embrace Tuck Willa is by all of the regular and reoccurring support that come from Friends of Gladstone, the Rotary Club, both of which host monthly meals for residents, and of course, the Gladstone Schools Food Pantry, which is the supplier of food at the food pantry available to our residents. So with that, I would love to conclude our presentation, unless, Adam, you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'll just add a quick note about that retention rate in our program. So, you know, permanent supportive housing is really the tool to resolve chronic homelessness for people who are low-income and disabled conditions really struggle to maintain stable housing on their own. National averages for retention and supportive housing is in the, in the 80s, in the 80%. Clackamas County, in our, our programs, one of the cornerstones of the metro supportive housing services measure is permanent supportive housing, right? The goal of, of measure funding is to end chronic homelessness for as many households as we can. And Clackamas County has a really high retention rate in our PSH programs in the upper 90s, so over 95% on average across our programs. And that doesn't mean that the administration of those programs are without challenge, because it, it is really hard to support really complicated households, households with complex needs. But we're doing a pretty good job at it in general, very good job. That 90, 95-plus retention rate is really high. And so like I said, it doesn't mean that there, there aren't challenges in that, but it does mean that the tool we have to deal with chronic homelessness in our community is PSH in Clackamas County is, is pretty successful in those programs. But and, and part of the reason this is important is because we can get folks off the street, but in order to, to end homelessness in our community, we have to help people maintain that stable housing. And so, and it takes the whole community. You hear our commissioners, including Commissioner West, who's here today, talk about a recovery-oriented system of care. And one of the kind of cornerstones of a recovery system of care is the whole community supporting folks. And that can be a lot to ask at times, because there are challenges on the community, including law enforcement call volume, things like that. But it takes, it takes all of us. So you have our commitment to continue to problem solve with the chief and come before you like this, hear comments, questions, concerns you have, and lean in and figure out how we can work together to support these households.
Well, thank you for making that statement, because, you know, we kind of started out with, this is a challenge, this is a problem, and, and I want to celebrate successes too. You're, you're working with a community of people who, I think it's 30% of the median income level, often special needs beyond that, many of them over age 50, that was the target group. Some culturally specific programs you're trying to offer at the same time. It would not be surprise, it wouldn't be surprising that some of these individuals have some, and with a history of homelessness besides, have some difficulty with relationships. They don't have the strengths of relationships and support from family and friends that, that the general community does. And so reliance on individual support from the county and the programs that you offer and the agencies and nonprofits that you work with is essential to the success of this. I don't imagine we have a 95% retention rate at Tuck Willa Springs, but you started with 48 residents. Do you have most of the same residents living there now?
We do. It actually, we do actually have a 98% retention rate at Tuck Willa. We, as I mentioned, we have had a couple of recent, an eviction in particular, but we have a very high retention rate at Tuck Willa, and it actually, it last year it was 100%, and this year it looks like we're on track to be about 95%.
Okay, and I understand that there is about a three-year waitlist, and you're not adding new names to the waitlist for programs administered by Home Forward. So, but we're not seeing turnover, so it's not like people on a waitlist are jumping in and new people are getting in and having this whole, you know, new-to-the-situation problem. So there is that stability there. So I want to emphasize those positives about it and appreciate your coming, and now I want counselors who have questions, Counselor Alexander.
Yes, so my question would be, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna be lucky enough here and then later on this meeting to get, hopefully do an IGA to get a mental health service coordinator. And I would, I've just, my concern would be that with the call volume, he would spend a lot of time up there. Do you guys provide, or can you provide a mental health service coordinator at Tuck Willa Springs?
So you, you heard Shannon mention new investments in behavioral health supports?
Right.
And is that a, is that a mental health services coordinator for your law enforcement?
It's gonna be, yeah. And I just, with, with the volume of calls, you know, will he spend a lot of time up there? Will you guys, you know, have, have your own person up there doing that?
We, we can, we can work together. The, the chief has a deep relationship with our Behavioral Health Division and our Behavioral Health Division Director and our mobile crisis team. And one of the things that we've seen be really successful across Clackamas County is a strong relationship between those embedded law enforcement, behavioral health specialists, our mobile crisis responders, our homeless service outreach providers, everybody working together. And that's part of the social fabric in Clackamas County and the intimacy of our community that is a little bit different. We, we're able to create those connections and do it really quickly and responsive, responsively in a way that I think, you know, Multnomah County in particular is really large, and the social fabric looks different. The connections between law enforcement partners and the human services providers, behavioral health crisis responders, is a little bit different. And so I think there, there are some virtues there, so I don't know what the chief has envisioned for this role, but making those connections has proven to be really successful.
Okay, and just one more, so everyone, you know, listening can understand. So you said the word households a lot. Now, each one of them rooms, is there, is there a, no kids, right? It's individuals in each room?
That, that's right. These are individuals, sort of, you know, I'm a, I'm a technocrat, right? I use technocrats to make reference to households. These are individuals here at this site, yeah, single adults.
Okay, thank.
Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you. I have two questions. When there is a situation where there is an eviction, lease not renewed, whatever that may be, are these individuals getting coupled with a resource after that, or are we creating a new houselessness situation for that person?
Counselor, thank you for the question. We only do lease enforcement and evictions when, first of all, when absolutely necessary with these populations. In the case of the, of a recent eviction that we had, it was related to one of the specific incidents that the chief mentioned, and it was a security of, of the entire community. We do our best, and our team, there are many folks behind me who actually do the work at Tuck Willa Springs, both from, from NARA and from Home Forward. They do our best to connect anyone, first of all, before we get to that point, making sure they're in the right place. But when we do have an incident like that, very definitely, they're trying to work with that person as much as that person is willing, willing to have those kind of dialogues, but we, we try to be very sparing about, about doing that.
And then my second, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to add a little piece there that most of the people struggling with housing insecurity in Clackamas County, particularly folks who have been homeless for a while in our community are known to us. They're known to our service providers, they're known to our law enforcement partners, and this isn't, this isn't a one-chance kind of thing. We, it's similar with engagement with folks on the streets, right? Sometimes it can take 20 engagements with somebody before they're ready to, to take an opportunity that we want to give them, and that seems hard to relate to, to, you know, folks in our circumstance, but that's the reality for people on the streets. And so when there are incidents where we have to exit people from shelter or evict them from their housing, that's not the end of the story by any means. It's, we, we just look at that as an opportunity in the moment that we weren't able to capitalize on, but we're not done.
Thank you. The other question was, when there is a situation where an LEO has to come and respond that maybe might not be so violent, and for some reason they're not able to make contact with the resident, whether it be refusal to open the door, whatever that case may be, and then they leave, what does Home Forward do from that point to ensure safety in the community and Tuck Willa Springs?
Counselor, I would want to, before I give you an answer to that, thank you for that question. I would, I would want to know the specific, to talk through the specific circumstances. I think it would depend on the type of call. But they do, Home Forward and our, our partners who are onsite every day do get reports about law enforcement being called, do make connections with those residents, whether they can do that in the moment or later on, but it, there, there could be a myriad of circumstances where someone hasn't, hasn't responded or opened the door, but they are following this information and this data, and we share with them mutually back and forth information so that they're able to go up and, and follow up with those individuals as well and help figure out what was going on. figure out what was going on in the moment and figure out how, what help or what assistance that person needs. So when it's not like, obviously, if it's a real incident at the time, law enforcement will do what they need to do.
For sure, yeah.
But our our team does follow up with that, and we're in regular communication with each other, sharing information that we learn so that and they know what's happening at night. They have incident reports, so even if security was there and resident services are, they're going back in and following up the next morning.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
So I just want to share that some of the people that are sitting in this room are the people that volunteer at Toquilla, and they're sitting right behind you, and they're all really good people. There are also people that work at our food bank that are very aware of what goes, that what what they're doing to help that community of people. When you put people into a, into a space like that and you ask them to live in community, many embrace it, and that's been so wonderful to see. I think that there's many people that, I know that there's many people that are living there that have changed from the experience. So that being said, our original ask when we asked Clackamas County and Home Forward to come six months after Toquilla had opened was to make sure that we were sort of a poster. And it's not an experiment because it was gonna happen, but what we were, our ask was, let's talk out loud about what's going on, what's not, what needs are not being met, and Clackamas County to garner from that information on every place that they built after that, made sure that there were services, wraparound services, and not just people left in a room with no hope. I I give Home Forward, am I saying that right? A lot of credit for the work that they do to make a community life in the building. It's a clean building, it's a clean. Out the out outside of it is very tidy, it's very inviting, and that right there speaks volumes. So I I just say, I can't say enough how much we appreciate that. And at the same time, I'm still concerned, as everyone else is, with the volume of calls from the people in the center. That can be scary for residents because sometimes a resident doesn't get, not a resident in the center, but a resident outside of that community doesn't get the entire story as to why police were called or what's happening up there. And of course, rumor mill flies, you know, we're a small community, that's what happens. I appreciate the work that they do there. I appreciate the work that you are putting into making it a successful home for people that are living in our community now, that are part of our community, because that's the way I feel they are. And I want to make sure that with Chief Schmerber, who we respect very highly here in this community, that that communication is never closed down or not given to him, the communication given to him to make sure that everything that he needs to help you and your community be successful, that they get that. So, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I, so I, Counselor Garlington, I really appreciate those comments, and I, you know, when we were here two years ago, I remember thinking to myself that so goes Toquilla Springs, so goes the future of supportive housing opportunities in Clackamas County. Because you're right, it was our first bond funded supportive housing project. And this kind of service was somewhat new to our community. We didn't have the resources to do this before. And Gladstone has been very gracious in, there's been some learning that's happened here. But it's it's been really unique because we've, we've learned and we've adapted, but in many ways, Chief Schmerber and the relationship that we have with him should serve as like a model for engagement between a county government, local service providers, law enforcement partners. And so I just have to give kudos to him for his patience and commitment to what we've been trying to do. Because we've learned a lot from him and what engagement with law enforcement should look like and the support that we want from law enforcement and need. And that, we have taken that and used that as a model to try to build relationships with our other law enforcement partners, like in Happy Valley, for example, in Oregon City, et cetera, where we have other sites coming online and we see similar settling in period, right? We tried to learn, but I just have to say that Chief Schmerber really has served as a really tremendous partner for us in that engagement.
I completely agree, and I'm just going to add one more little thing because we've heard some presentations from Clackamas County Community or Clackamas Community College up here. And I'd like to see the county work with Clackamas Community College on trying to figure out how we can move people through a program in order to fill the spots that we need for employment at these facilities. I think that that might be a piece that going forward, we, you know, we really have to think outside the box and if you want some, maybe a firefighter, you get them through that first two-year firefighting school at at wherever they need to be, or even law enforcement, that side. And, you know, I think that that might be a piece that's missing because I've heard what you're saying through a lot of different places that say, we just can't hire anybody. Well, it's because it's a real specialized program and need and, you know, the compassion that it takes to work with people who are sometimes at their very lowest. That doesn't happen straight out of college with a business degree. That's a very specialized thing. So I really invite you guys to think about reaching out to the community college system and seeing what can be done to in, to get those employees that you need.
Well, so thank you for that. You know, there, there has been a challenge in our community where the folks who are delivering these services are on the bubble for needing those same services because of the wages that they've earned. Shelter workers earning seventeen dollars an hour. Shelter work is grueling and hard. And so we, we've tried to do things like increase wages, encourage our service providers to pay livable wages. We've been able to do that, you know, due to the resources from the supportive housing services measure, and so we we've been able to show up a little bit differently as government and say, you know, we, we gotta do that. We have to take that step because we need you to be able to recruit and retain a quality workforce. The retention is so huge, right? Because the, the, the knowledge that you accumulate over time and the wisdom that you accumulate helps you show up to work every day. And if we have turnover and someone new is stepping into the job and trying to build relationships with the resident, it's just so hard. So I I appreciate that. We haven't been able to go maybe as far as we might like in that workforce development, but the professionalization of homeless services vocations is really, really important. And our outcomes as a community are contingent upon those skills and the wages that we're able to pay folks.
Yeah, I have some questions about security, and I think it kind of like melds well with what you were just saying with, you know, trying to provide the best services possible at, you know, the budget that we have for these services. Security is expensive, so I have some questions about that. So it sounds like we currently have twenty-four hour staffing and overnight security. When did that begin?
I, I am gonna.
Ballpark's fine.
Previously, we had security that kind of ran by, and then we have the need for onsite security, and that started.
Okay. And then is that really, is the goal of that as a temporary measure? Is that our, is that the plan moving forward as a permanent?
That is a permanently funded part of of Toquilla Springs, so we added that to make sure in part due to some of what we were experiencing, what law enforcement was experiencing with increased call volume and to make sure that there was a presence there to address issues as they may come up over the evening. And then, so I'll answer quickly and.
No, no, I, yeah, I have a bunch of questions about security, but I hopefully be. So there's, there's a dramatic difference in the quality of security that you can hire. So all the way from, you know, barely out of high school, you know, training them for the first time to off-duty police officer. What, what, what does that look like at Toquilla Springs?
So you are right that the quality of security officer differs. And I know Home Forward just completed a procurement for new security services. I don't know the results of that procurement. I'll be eager to hear about it. But I do know that one of the priorities was having people that can show up with a trauma-informed lens and serve in a little bit of a unique capacity, right? A very compassionate capacity where they can deal with, you know, for example, well-skilled and de-escalation, mental health first aid, things like that. So they're, they're equipped to support the folks that are living in a community like this.
Okay. Because, you know, you think about having forty-eight individuals in, you know, a community like this, then you have a security guard. You know, depending on the quality of that security and the expectations that are set of that security, you know, it, it, it's an interesting dynamic. So I'm curious what the the feedback has been from residents and from Chief Schmerber about how that has impacted the environment at Toquilla.
With regards to security, I, I can, I can address that. Yes, they have twenty-four seven security. The problem until recently was we weren't getting the information needed when responding to calls. And I think we're correcting that as we go, which is helpful for our officers responding. Of course, with the, with the shots fired incident, discharge of the firearm and and accidental or not inside the facility and and the response from the security didn't lend us to didn't lend us to a very embrace of thought of of security when they can't hear a shotgun go off in the facility. That's very bothersome for us, so I'm glad to hear they're going out for new security.
And can you tell me a little bit about what the expectations are for security? So is the, is the expectation that security is screening people as they're walking in? Is the expectation that they're staying on the exterior of the building and calling for support when needed? Like, can you tell me more about what, you know, what the expectation is for security in the building?
If I might, this is Jessica from Home Forward, who actually is onsite with the team there, and I think can answer a little bit more of your questions in detail.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so expectations for security, they don't necessarily screen people that are coming in, but they are present on site, and so they do regular property walks. And if they notice anyone that is not a resident, that's kind of hanging out in common areas, they approach them and question them, and if they let them know they need to be with their resident, and if not, they're going to have to escort them off property. So they look for, they're there to answer questions from residents and to respond to concerns that residents have. They're there to kind of keep an eye on the property itself, so identify any, you know, issues that are on property, maintenance issues, things like that, and just kind of keep kind of general safety of the the area.
Has there been an effort to build relationships between the security officer and residents at Toquilla?
Yes, definitely. And the, your previous question around kind of what has the response been from residents, for the most part, it's been really good. The fact that they have someone there that they know they can go to in the middle of the night if they have a concern is very comforting for them. I think you do bring up some, some valid points of sometimes security is not the best and and folks, especially who are dealing with mental health issues, tend to view people in uniform not kindly. So the fact that they're onsite and they're onsite twelve hours a day for seven days a week is a real good opportunity for them to to start to build those relationships with folks. And we have seen some folks who, you know, previously were, you know, the ones who were calling, you know, multiple times a night have reduced the amount of calls and have occasionally used security as a resource to kind of reach out to and kind of do some of that reality testing that's needed and use them as a resource.
Great. And it does sound like there was new procurement of security services that hopefully will give us a better outcome.
Yes.
Great. Cool. Thank you.
Counselor Rob.
Thank you. This question is regarding security, so I don't know if you want to sit down quite yet. Thank you. And I actually have a number of them, but we'll start with that since we were on it. What will be your metric for measuring the success of this new security team? Because evidently it seems like realistically, there's only been a slight measurement of increased success with having security there. So what are we looking for now?
So I will pull the curtain back and say we have decided on, we did, we did go through the procurement process, and we are sticking with Northwest Enforcement, which is who was providing services before. So we had a pretty robust procurement process and a panel that that chose there. And so I think the measures of success are the relationships, honestly, that they're able to build with the residents, the communication that we have between security, our onsite staff, and then being able to communicate that to to Clackamas County. And I think just the the amount of incidents, so Shannon had talked about, we receive incident reports every evening of anything that security has addressed. And so seeing those trends and making sure that things that could have escalated to calls to police or calls to EMS can be addressed by security instead. And so kind of measuring those call logs against some of the issues that are coming up overnight.
So then if you plan on using the same firm, but you're expecting a different outcome, what are they doing differently to provide that?
So in our RFP, we did outline mental health first aid, trauma-informed care and diversity and equity training. That had to be something that the security firm was providing to their, their folks. And I think it's increasing that communication between the leadership of the security agency and our leadership to make sure that they know what are the issues that are coming up, what do we expect them to do about it? How can we address anything that like the, the fact that the security guard did not hear a shotgun go off? Like, what are we going, what are we going to do about that? Like, does the person need training? Do we need to make sure that they're in different positions, you know, in the building, that kind of thing? And we have also, previously, they didn't have access to the camera system, and now they do have access to the camera system so they can go back and actually review footage and and do that, so.
And as I mentioned at the outset, one of the changes that we also have made is making sure that security has a list of all of the tenants. That was information that security didn't have. So when law enforcement responds, security couldn't give them the information that they needed to do the appropriate response. And after we learned that was occurring, we made sure that that we had no legal, there was no legal protection for that information on the rent roll. And then we've implemented that policy, and now security has access to that information and can help law enforcement respond appropriately. So it's not frankly a wasted visit for law enforcement. And and they're able to tamp down issues before they go any farther.
So then with that, we'll just see their staffing won't change, they'll just see an increase in training. Okay, so then how long do you anticipate that will take to get up to the speed you're looking for?
I don't think it should take very much time, very much time at all. I would expect within like February. I mean, their new contract started December first.
So notable changes by February. Okay, thank you. And then this question is not security, so. Maybe for Shannon, when we talk about the new behavioral health team focused on acute individual challenges, you said that is funded but not staffed.
Yes.
So what does that actually look like? How many people is that? What is the training they're getting? And what are we going to see different?
I will, I would like to get you more information on that. I do know that it's, what we've been envisioning is a, is a three-person team. And as to the specifics of the detailed training, I would have to defer to my colleague at Behavioral Health who will be running that program, and I, I I don't have all that information at my fingertips, and I would hate to make up an answer. So I would love to be able to get back with you if that would be okay.
Sure. I kind of bring that up because I feel like Counselor Alexander's question earlier was addressed but not really answered just because the information wasn't available right now in that how would we In that, how would we, or the question was, would our new behavioral health specialists be burdened down by existing calls? More so than they would otherwise in the community. So what I'd ultimately like to see is how that's avoided.
I, I, um, what I can tell you is that we, we would share, we share that value with you and we will work to coordinate. Um, to make sure that, that that does not occur to the best of our ability and that we bring other resources to bear. So without, without knowing all the specifics, I'd want to bring the right people together. And, um, we at the department would to make sure that, that we're working with that new resource, but making sure that it is not. Um, overly devoted in any way, shape or form to Tukwila Springs.
Yeah. Yeah. And Counselor, my, my intent wasn't to evade that question.
I understand.
I was more speaking to like the, the. Purpose of that position is to address mental health needs in the community. How we do that is by working really closely together. I was describing what our system looks like to address that. Certainly there's a high concentration of need at, at Tukwila. We don't want that person to be saddled with only supporting mental health needs at Tukwila Springs. So you, you have our commitment that this is supposed to be a resource for your whole community, not Tukwila Springs. And so we will ensure that, uh, it is that, that it's not just a resource that's overburdened by supporting. What, because to me that would signify the need for other ongoing day to day support at that site. That's devoted to it, right? So that your person can focus on the rest of the community. Maybe there are one-off incidents. Okay, that, that's different, but just want to make that clear.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I think it's important that I iterate that. Tukwila is part of the community that absolutely deserves the same attention as anyone else. And I don't want to denigrate that by saying I don't want to see our person bogged down there. I just want to make sure that we have your commitment tonight, that you understand that we're. We're taking you at your word, that you will provide those resources to the community based on what you presented tonight. And that the resources will be adequately and fairly distributed. Thank you. That's all.
I was just wondering, um, Chief Schmerber, if you had any other requests or things that, um, would make. Police interface with Tukwila easier.
Uh, thank you. No, I, I think that, uh, our meetings with the county have been, uh, we're going to continue moving those forward. And, and continue to try and solve some of these challenges. We all want, uh, Tukwila to be successful. They are a part of our community and so we're going to continue to move in that direction unless otherwise told so.
Well, I want to thank you for coming back two years later. Um, and as I recall, uh, there was a big turnover on our city council. Not all of us who are up here, uh, in fact, most of us who are up here were not part of that council at that time. But a lot of us have reviewed that meeting. And I think the thing that positive thing that went away from that is something you underscored earlier. That this, uh, this gave us an opportunity not to say we reject this, we don't want this in our community. But yes, uh, you know, some, some growing pains are natural. We need to learn. And we need to apply what we learned to other communities, uh, around the county. Uh, a lot of the funding for supportive housing services in Clackamas County comes from, uh, you know, but. Taxes that Metro imposes on people and there's talk of changing the way some of that is structured. And from the point of view of many of the cities in Clackamas County, we have made the observation. That a lot of this supportive housing service scales down better than it scales up. And that's why we're seeing success at Clackamas County at the city level and county resources being applied to city levels. And programs developed around the communities that are based on the knowledge that people have of those in their community. And the needs of their community and the positive resources, like as Counselor Garland did mention, the people seated behind you tonight. Who have invested in making, wanting to help make this program a success. So, uh, I think, uh, we, we've learned a little bit more. We haven't come back and said, hey, everything's fixed. Uh, and, but I think we want to still have that same gracious approach. That we recognize, uh, that we can learn from mistakes. We can learn from, uh, new directions and changes and positive things that we, that we do. And that it benefits more than just this community. It could benefit programs similar to this across the county. And maybe even into some other counties that could learn a little bit from, from the successes that Clackamas County, uh, and your departments have had. So I'm grateful to you for coming tonight. I'm grateful to the volunteers that are present tonight and for the work that they do. Uh, and, uh, we appreciate this presentation.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, initially I believe there was a certain number of units that were set aside for Native American indigenous residents. And I'm wondering if those are being utilized as such currently.
Yeah, there were twelve originally and, um, that was the, the twelve that was funded through OHCF. And then, um, in actuality, like that's a preference for all of our forty eight units. Not all of our forty eight units are filled with, uh, folks who are Native American, but that is a preference for all of them.
Thank you.
And do you, do you have the stats on how many today have met that preference requirement? Or we could follow up with that.
All right. So you've got a couple of things you can bring back to us. Uh, uh, Counsel Robert's questions, Counsel Huckabee's question. Uh, but, uh, once again, thank you very much for, for participating tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll move on to, uh, the, the, the normal part of our meeting. And, uh, we began, are there any addition, agenda additions or corrections, uh, Administrator Betts?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one change that I would like to make, and that is under item number seven of the consent agenda. As you know, we are currently going through a recount process for council position number three. That has not been certified. So I would like to pull position number three from the general election results. And we will certify that at a future date.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So that leaves us with our consent agenda, uh, which includes approval of the October eighth, twenty twenty four regular minutes. Approval of October bank balances, budget report for the period ending ten thirty one twenty four. Approval of the October check register, legal costs for October twenty twenty four. Department head monthly reports for November twenty twenty four. Certify two of the three races, no, three of the four. Let's see, I've got, I've got to count now. Three of the four races will be, will be certifying with the exception of council, uh, seat number three. Uh, approval of a contract to complete storm drain improvements at Yale Avenue. Consider approval of renewal of the police department's five-year TASER international subscription with Axon Enterprise. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Water Environmental Services and the city of Gladstone. For phase one MS four National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, NPDES. Permit compliance support and authorizing the city administrator to sign that. Uh, and I understand one counselor may want to just declare a slight conflict regarding one item.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just a possible conflict of interest on item eight. The work being done on Yale Avenue is the, um, cul-de-sac that I live on. The improvements to this section do not affect my household in any way.
All right. Very good. But thank you for making that declaration. So does any member of the council want to withdraw anything else from the consent agenda? Or would someone like to make a motion to approve it?
I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
All right. It's been moved by Counsel Robert, seconded by Counsel Alexander. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda, uh, as amended is approved. Uh, do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, this is time for Gladstone City event announcements. Uh, did we have anyone request to make some announcements tonight?
Yes, we have two. First is Bob Everett.
The microphone's on?
I can see that. Thank you. Um, thank you, Council and, uh, Mayor Milch and, uh, Chief and Jackie. Uh, appreciate, uh, you having, allowing me the time to, uh, talk every month and to, and not kicking me off the stage, so to speak. Um, tonight I'll keep it a little bit simple. Um, our club, uh, uh, elected last month to not hold bingo this month. So we're not going to have a bingo, um, on next, uh, will be next, uh, Friday, uh, the twentieth. We figured that was probably a little too close to Christmas. Um, we will be having, uh, time in, uh, January. Um, also, uh, more than anything, I want to talk about, uh, uh, the clothes closet. Um, they are, uh, always in need of items, although for now they have had so many donations. Um, that general clothes, they don't need a lot. In fact, they're sort of asking people to hold off until, till January. What they really do need are socks and underwear, because these are, these are items that we cannot keep. If somebody donates them, we have to get rid of them. They all have, they all have to be new. Um, they had a donation, I understand of about ninety pounds of socks. Um, I don't know how many ninety pounds of socks are, but that's a lot. And, but they're all small, I understand. Our club gives, uh, a couple thousand dollars worth of, uh, socks and underwear to, to, uh, the closet. But they can always use more. It's in great demand. There are far more people now that are coming every single week. Um, I'll be curious, this weekend is our turn. So I'll be curious, uh, to sort of see what happens, um, this week. And, uh, how many, but they're, 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 they're upwards of thirty, thirty P, thirty. Uh, families coming with over fifty people, uh, that they're serving each week. So, and that's only in a two hour period. So it's, it's just, uh, it's grown astronomical since I've been there. Um, we also do volunteer at Tukwila and I just want to say what, what a great experience that has been. Each time we go, we always enjoy it. We enjoy talking to the, uh, people that live there and, uh, find it very enlightening. And, um, and really we get a lot out of it. Um, that's really all I have. Um, and, um, I do want to thank the city, this, uh, community center this last Saturday for the event they held. That was a lot of fun. Went there and it was a great time. Um, so hopefully a lot of the people were able to, uh, to attend, uh, both during the day and in the evening. Uh, any questions or any things?
Can I throw something out there? Um, I spoke with Becky on Saturday and those ninety pounds of socks are infant socks. So please, if you're going to donate socks, uh, do school age socks.
They don't need infant socks. So, yeah.
If someone was able to not go buy socks, but leave a gift card during the month of December, where would they take that to or mail it to?
That's a good question. Um, you can, why don't you just send it to me? I'll, I'll make sure Becky gets it. I, uh, I'll be honest, I don't know Becky's address necessarily. Um, I don't think it'd be wise to leave it over at, at the location of the closet itself. Um, but you can certainly, you know where I'm at. I think you can probably edit it over to me then too, at the office or.
I'm just kind of reaching out to other people in our community who maybe didn't have time to go shopping for socks, but could pick up a gift card at Safeway.
That would be fantastic. I know Becky would appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. And thank you and the Rotary. Let them know. I say thank you personally.
I will. Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. We, we, we do enjoy it. That's for sure. Anyway, thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bob. You're kicked off the stage. All right. We move on to our regular agenda. We have, uh, four or five items.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said there were two. I apologize for that. The second person, come forward, please.
Hello, I'm here to follow up on the Tukwila Springs and then what Dr. Bob said. Um, Tukwila Springs is going to be having a holiday dinner on December nineteenth. Um, the presentation said Friends of Gladstone. It's actually Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park is the group that volunteers and cooks all the time. Mindy Garlington is the one that coordinates it. She's doing an incredible job. So December nineteenth, we're looking for people to donate cookies because we're going to do a baked potato bar at their request and a cookie bar also. So if you want to donate cookies, we would love it. Let Mindy know and we can, um, pick it up or do whatever we need to do to get it to Tukwila. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. Now we move on to the regular agenda. Uh, item twelve is, um, revenue intergovernmental agreement with the city of Gladstone, Gladstone Police Department and Clackamas County. For a mental health services coordinator. We've made some reference to this earlier. We get, getting to the actual item now. Uh, resolution twelve thirty nine, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing resolution twelve thirty seven. Utility rate changes, right of way changes, community center foot clinic room rental fee, planning fees and floodplain development fee changes. Item fourteen is appointments to boards, committees and commissions. And item fifteen, recognition of outgoing elected officials. So we'll turn to staff for a presentation on item twelve, the intergovernmental agreement regarding a mental health services coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. We're very pleased to be able to bring this to you at our last regular meeting. This council has been very supportive of this partnership. And so I'm going to have Chief Schmerber give you a brief overview of the position and the agreement that we're asking you to approve tonight.
Good evening, Council and, uh, Mr. Mayor. We're here tonight to consider the approval of the, uh, Gladstone Police Department to enter an intergovernmental agreement with the Behavioral Health Division. And Housing and Human Services, uh, Department of Clackamas County for a mental health services coordinator. On November fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty three, the police department came before the council. Uh, requesting opioid settlement monies to be used directly towards the hiring of a mental health service coordinator. In partnership with Clackamas County to be embedded with the police department, the Gladstone Police Department at the November meeting. I shared a statistical data that showed between October twenty twenty two and October twenty twenty three. The Gladstone Police Department responded to a hundred and twelve calls of service. That had been identified as someone in crisis involving mental health, addiction or accommodation of both. Recent data between November one, twenty twenty three and November twenty four, twenty twenty four shows that the Gladstone police officers responded to ninety nine incidents. Of a person in crisis involving mental health, addiction or accommodation of both. As stated in twenty twenty three, these complaints typically involve repeated calls for service and are time consuming. Although the Gladstone Police Department's relationship with Clackamas County Behavioral Health Mobile Crisis Team and casework is strong. Resources to address mental, uh, mental illness and addiction remain limited. Upon approval of the, of the intergovernmental agreement or IGA, the Clackamas County, uh, with Clackamas County. The police department will enter into a two-year pilot project with Clackamas County Behavioral Health. To support the Gladstone community struggling with mental health issues and addiction. The IGA would become effective once signed with an end date of December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Clackamas County will hire the new mental health service coordinator to work closely with the mobile crisis team. While embedded at, in, at the Gladstone Police Department. Work assignments, uh, for the coordinator will be directed by the police department, focusing first on the Gladstone community. But will have the flexibility to support other jurisdictions as needed through mutual aid. The intent of the mental health service coordinators provides services to those in crisis and addiction in lieu of police officer. In lieu of a police officer, when a police officer is not needed. This position will also provide, uh, short-term and long-term assistance in hopes of providing wraparound services. That will benefit someone in crisis while reducing calls for service. Kind of a lot of what we talked about with, with Tukwila too, but now more openly and what opened up for our community. But that, that's essentially the presentation. So we're asking to enter into this agreement using our opioid money.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I appreciate Counselor Roberts. You're, you're making the connection between this item and, uh, the, they just took all the springs as well. And Counsel Alexander, you made the same connection. So we understand the difference. And the, 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 the different scope of responsibilities and, and, uh, authority and so on. The connection to this person, does this normally come through nine one one calls? Or, uh, would it be, uh, and in your experience, uh, uh, how would the decision, how would the dispatching of this individual happen?
At a variety of different ways, as it works. We're really kind of following, uh, following the Wilsonville model a little bit. Um, but theirs is more of a mental health, ours is a dual, uh, position. But it's going to come through nine one one calls, but also follow up on police officer responses. So when we, when we arrive at, let's just say a, a domestic or another circumstance of type of call where there might be addiction. And or mental health issues, um, this, this coordinator will be able to help. Although really focused on the addiction piece, there's ties and wraparounds because they're working with the mobile crisis team. So it's, uh, a lot of resources coming our way with that one position.
All right. So it's not, you know, you, you're not the pressure of triage on somebody at the dispatch level, but, but. All right, so it's not, you know, you you're not the pressure of triage on somebody at the dispatch level, but but your officers and and this person kind of seeing the big picture and knowing the proper response and connections that need to be made.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, and we've identified the office space for this coordinator already, which is right outside the bullpen where all the officers sit. So there'll be direct communication all the time.
Very good.
Supervisor being able to work with that 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 individual.
All right. Counselor Huckabee, I think you had a question.
Thank you. Did you, can you confirm you said dual certified?
Yes, yes, as a coordinator, because uh opioid money is very specific on on the use. But because they're dual certified, they'd be able to to identify and get additional resources in if it's another person in crisis and at least be able to stabilize that or help us.
I'm so happy to hear that. The other question, do you um expect this to be a or foresee it to be a uniformed position or plain clothes?
No, I perceive it to be plain clothes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, is there, uh, you know, you you've given us some good information on this in the past. We don't have a lot of additional questions tonight other than just appreciative that, you know, you've you've worked some things out. Uh, would a staff or would a council member like to make a motion on this?
I would do that. All right.
Second.
I make a motion to approve for the City of Gladstone Police Department to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Behavioral Health Division of the Health, Housing and Human Services Department of Clackamas County for a mental health service coordinator.
I'll second.
All right. Counsel Alexander moved. Counselor Cook seconded the motion. Any additional discussion from council members?
No.
I just want to say thank you so much for putting the effort and partnering with Clackamas County on this. I am over the moon excited to have this asset in our community.
Thank you.
Oh, you're kind of assuming it's gonna pass, huh? But let's let's take a vote. Tammy, call the roll, please.
Counselor Blaub.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously, uh, so we will enter into this agreement, uh, if the county will too, yes. All right, we move on. Next item number thirteen. Um, this is approval of a resolution, uh, number twelve thirty-nine, repealing resolution twelve thirty-seven and adopting a revised master fee schedule effective January one, twenty twenty-five. There are a number of of different fees that would be affected by this, so we'll have staff do a summary and presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So a master fee schedule allows the city to charge a fee for a service, and we cannot charge a fee for a service unless it is in the fee schedule. We come to you twice a year. Typically, it's once in June and once in December to update those fees. So you will see in your staff report that there are utility rate increases, a right-of-way minimum charge, planning fee changes, a planning floodplain habitat rate change, and a community center foot clinic room rental fee. Our finance consultant Kathy Brucker is gonna summarize those changes for you.
Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, I, as Jackie said, I will go ahead and summarize the various increases that we are requesting tonight. First off, for the utility rate increases, these have been budgeted to approximate the estimated cost of living adjustments for the last few years. We've maintained an increase of four percent even through the years when the increase to the cost of doing business were far exceeding the increase requested for revenues. Even though the current CPI is slightly under four percent, this rate will help stabilize the funds and continue to allow a steady rate of growth to pull through revenues and expenses. The four percent increase is calculated into the budget for this fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The next one are the right-of-way minimum charges. In twenty seventeen, the ordinance implemented annual three percent increases to the minimum rates for linear footage of utility lines within the right-of-way as of January one of each year. That's what you're seeing there. The planning fee changes, these ones after the discontinuation of planning services of Clackamas County, the city has been addressing the applicability of the previous fee structures. In chapter, chapter seventeen point three six, this change will remove two types of property line adjustments, type one and type two, that the city does not have and add one fee for property line adjustments at one thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars. Then in chapter seventeen point three four, type one and type two partitions are included but not listed in the master fee schedule. To comply with the requirements of each type of partition, two new fees for type one and type two are proposed at two thousand one sixty and two thousand seven oh five respectively. The planning floodplain habitat habitat rate changes are due to changes next year in the floodplain regulations, including protection and mitigation of fish habitat with floodplain development permits. The city intend, excuse me, anticipates increased costs due to due to the need for a certified floodplain manager and longer review periods. To recover these costs, a floodplain development permit fee of two thousand four hundred dollars is recommended. This fee would also be comparative to nearby jurisdictions to Gladstone. And then finally, the community center foot clinic room rental fee. Residents of Gladstone benefit from a registered nurse who visits the center two to three times per month to offer a fee-charged foot clinic. The center has furnished the room at no charge for these clinics, but proposes now to implement a ten percent fee on uh based on daily, total daily sales paid by the provider for use of the room. So if resolution twelve thirty-nine is approved, the requested updated and new rates to the master fee schedule would become effective January one, twenty twenty-five. So are there any questions about these proposed fees?
I have a quick question.
Counselor Cook.
Uh, uh, for the foot clinic room rental, um, has that been communicated with the providers who are currently providing that service? And have they indicated that that might be an issue for them?
It has been discussed prior to it being proposed, and they're in full agreement.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we're not putting our.
No surprise.
Risk of losing a service. Thank you.
And I want to do so, so. Fees are never gonna go down. You'll never see anything in the packet that says fees are gonna go down. It's just gonna go up and up and up every time we meet. Is that is that the deal?
It depends on which fee you're talking about, I guess.
Well, all of them are going up, aren't they?
For this proposal, they are, yes.
Okay. All right.
I'd also like to share the projects that are currently in the budget for the water and the sewer infrastructure to help explain where some of these costs go. So right now, the Budget Committee has approved a biennium budget, which, as Kathy said, these four percent rate increases are in there. So the specific projects in Gladstone include seven hundred and fifty thousand for the rehabilitation of the eighty-second Drive pump station that was built in the nineteen seventies. It's supposed to be complete by the end of twenty twenty-five. Three million for the Sherwood Forest asbestos pipe replacement. Uh, construction is to begin late in twenty twenty-five. There are seven hundred and fifty thousand towards capital improvements for water and sewer systems in the overlap area with Oklahoma Water Services. There's an interest in investing in advanced meter infrastructure that will allow the city to collect real-time data for utility meters instead of having um meter reader company monitoring that. Monitoring and managing the systems remotely and detecting leaks, outages and other issues quickly will improve billing accuracy, reduce operational costs and allow consumers to access their usage data through online portals. That is something that the city will be looking at. The approximate investment for that could be up to four million dollars. As you all know, we just completed a one point two million dollar infiltration and inflow reduction plan that was mandated by the state because we had sewer overflows in the river. After that is complete, we are now required to do flow monitoring porting for one year. DEQ will require us to continue investing in our infrastructure. We will have to move forward with what is called phase three of the project, which includes the West Barton Basin sewers. If we have to move forward with that, it's estimated to cost about sixteen million dollars.
And the the funding for this, uh, for at least some of these projects is not exclusively from ratepayer fees. Uh, as you mentioned in your newsletter article this month, we used a substantial amount of ARPA funds uh coming from the federal government during the pandemic uh and and uh directed them toward uh part of that infiltration and inflow uh project. So um, we're we're not, for those, in the past, we've heard some citizens saying, why don't you get some grants? Why don't you get some funding from other sources? And and to the extent possible, we have tried to do that as well. We also get assistance from Water Environmental Services on this project because it makes more sense to uh reduce the INI uh issues at the city level rather than expand the capacity of the treatment center to withstand that water that's coming through uh the stormwater that gets into the sewer system.
That's correct, and I think it the council should be commended for almost allocating close to a million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds towards that project. Otherwise, you would be looking at higher rate increases to have completed that project.
All right, I know we have uh at least one citizen who expressed an interest in speaking on this tonight. I want to hear from our citizens as well before we deliberate as a council. So Tammy?
Yes, uh, there are actually two. First is Kathleen Hollingsworth.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, and the microphone is still on. Dr. Hollingsworth, welcome.
Yeah, hi. My name's Kathleen. I live down the street. I teach full-time faculty at Clackamas Community College. Nice to see you. Um, I'm not really here to make comments. I'm here to ask questions. I'm here because I went to pay my water bill this month, really looking forward to uh my winter bill. I like to grow my own food. I don't water my grass, but I do like organic food that doesn't have any pesticides, and I think that's one of the really nice things about living in Oregon. Mm-hmm. I was really looking forward to that water bill that usually comes around in December, and I get relieved of about thirty, forty dollars a month. But with the same water use that I use in December, which is a lot less than July and August and September, it was just as high as it was in July. And I looked on my bill to find out that y'all were gonna raise rates again January first. I was here a number of years ago uh to advocate against an increase, maybe seven or eight years ago. I've been living with it. We've all been living with it. Um, it's increased, I would think, twice since then, most recently enough to increase my bill about fifteen percent. So I'm not, I I guess, I guess I want to ask questions. No one needs excessively high bills. We live in Gladstone for a reason. We like small towns. Yeah. So my questions are, who's overseeing the work that's being done to fix the failing infrastructure? Who's making sure there's efficient use of existing funding? Where is this information being kept public? Why aren't the last few hikes filling the need that you said that you needed back then? And I appreciate that you brought up that where are these other sources coming? There must be other sources of funding from the federal government. It seems like this outgoing administration had quite a bit of money to help out for existing infrastructure that was not working very well. Have you looked at progressive water conservation for people that are not watering their lawns, not taking excessively long showers? And I'm thinking of specifically one place in this town that I see wasting water all the time. And I have to tell you, I'm a I'm a supporter of twenty-four-hour fitness, but every time I go into that shower, they're always leaking. So why are residents who work really hard to serve people in this community like CCC faculty, why are we being punished for using a moderate amount of water when there are a lot of businesses that actually are really wasting water quite unconsciously? Um, so, you know, I just want to say, like, I live here because I like a small town. I don't want to live in Multnomah County. I don't want to live in the Bay Area. I like small-town Oregon. I serve this community by teaching and working really hard. And I just want to say, I really, I respect the work y'all do, but I think we need to rethink this and make it so that people that work and live here can afford to live here because paying over two hundred dollars a month for my water bill is insane. So I really want you to rethink this before you go and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Uh, Administrator Ritz, would you like to respond to some questions uh tonight? Uh, how how would you like to handle the?
It's probably best if the finance consultant and I meet with Ms. Hollingsworth to answer those questions, and we can also provide that information to the city council.
Okay, I I will say one thing, uh, because I I see some comments now and then on on social media. People people ask about, I thought my bill was gonna go down this month, and it didn't. Uh, water meters are generally read in the first week of the month, and the bill uh that comes that reflects that reading doesn't arrive till the first of the following month. So if you think I used a lot water less, a lot less water in the month of November, and when I got my bill on Sept- on December first, it it looked like I didn't, you know, it didn't go down. Uh, your actual usage probably reflects not the previous month, but the the month, two months prior to that. And uh, my wife has a gardener too. I I monitor it very closely and keep track of those ups and downs. And your water usage is the one part of your bill where you where you will see a fluctuation from month to month because most of the bill is fixed costs that do not change based on usage.
No, I look at this thing.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you look at, if it's your your electric bill, for example, almost every item on your electric bill from Portland General Electric is based purely on the usage, uh, and is multiplied by a factor based on your usage that month. The only item on your water bill that's based in in Gladstone that's that's calculated that way is the actual water usage part. The rest are fixed fees. So uh, no, you can cut your usage in half. Unfortunately, your bill will not be cut in half when your usage, your total bill. Uh, so thank you. We uh, we we know your questions, and staff will will look and and respond to those.
I think it's fair for us to have that information.
Yes, I think so too. All right, and you had a second person as well?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're here, but uh Terp or Terry Powell? I do not see them online.
Terry Powell? Not here, not online? Okay. Thank you. Um, uh, council members, do you have uh comments, uh, questions? Counselor Garlington.
So I just want to say that I too feel the pain. I don't water my lawn. I don't, I I shop at the Barmer's Market so that I don't have to look at the bill in the middle of summer because it does hurt. At the same time, I'm well aware of the fact that the people that work in this community also expect cost of living raises every month or every year. And this is where a lot of that goes. And it and it is a trickle-down effect. It's the people that work for us, the people that read the meters, the people that we hire to do projects in our city that we cannot ourselves do. And those costs are rising everywhere, and it hurts, and I and I see that, and I hear what you're saying. And at the same time, I can't diminish the work that the people that work for us and for our community do. I I I can't not, you know, not do that. Do I like rate hikes? Hate them. Hate them. It just, every time, you know, last year when we did the bills, I said to my husband, this is, this is a whole game changer at our house, and I get what you're saying. I really do. But I I cannot diminish the value of the the work that that I value from the people that work for us and do the work for us. And I want to be able to flush my toilet, and I want to be able to make sure that people aren't having water that's can't pass a test. I don't want to be one of those communities that's constantly boiling water. And one of the biggest things is, I don't want the state of Oregon or DEQ to call our administrator and say, hey, you're spilling over again. We have to eliminate that. And yes, that comes with rate hikes. Believe me, I paid twenty-five dollars a month for water when I moved to Gladstone. So it's a big difference for me as well, and I understand your pain. But I can't vote no on that.
No, that's that's not our procedure. Sorry. Um, and 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 I'll add too. Uh, Kathy Brucker mentioned it, you you turn in terms of comparison to the CPI, but uh, really, when it comes to these infrastructure improvements, um, I know from work with uh Clackamas County Water Environmental Services and their capital improvement project, uh, people in the industry look to something called the the. people in the industry look to something called the Seattle Construction Cost Index, which is a regional index that looks at not only labor costs, but also the cost of a lot of the components that go into non-residential construction, like water pipes and sewer pipes and all those things. And that index, which which measures a comparison of the cost from one point of time to another, really took off in 2020, and that's why when we, eight or nine years ago, whenever it was, when we first may have two years in a row of ten percent increases in water bills from what they had been in Gladstone, those were very painful increases for residents, but they were something that had to be done to keep up with that increase. And now to limit ourselves to four percent, it's almost a little bit, we're kind of, you know, straining to meet the need with a four percent increase. But that was the commitment we made that we wouldn't go much beyond that level. And and I like that we're continuing that, and I hope that some of those costs and the labor costs and the supply costs will stabilize in the near future and that we won't have to do a big increase any longer. But I also support the level that's been proposed here, as well as the other fees and charges that don't impact residents directly as much, but are still important to be updated. So I will enter, oh, yes, Counselor Alexander.
So, because I understand exactly where she's coming from, and it's the same thing, but what people are, I'm hearing in the community is, okay, the rate increase, we had to go up. We paid a low water bill. Now we pay this high water bill. Okay, a hundred-year program, explain where some of the money's going right now today that you can see, physically see. That's what the people are asking. What are we seeing?
You don't, you don't see the pipes under the ground, but the smoke tests we did in 2020, the engineering that took a year or so to get done, to design the fixes, and then the improvements in the pipes and the reduction in the water that's leaking from the stormwater system into the sewer system, it's all under the ground.
Right, and the fines we have to pay.
And the DEQ fines.
I can't.
We're not at the half-million-dollar level like the city of Sandy
Right.
that's looking at two hundred millions to fix their whole system. But we, but we have addressed, I think, and gotten good results from what? It's not something you'll see or taste, I suppose. It's the unglamorous, unsexy side of city government is that infrastructure improvement. And anything you'd want to add, Administrator Bets?
No, be digged, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I can meet with you after the meeting and schedule a time.
Thank you. Counselor Blough?
Yes, I just also wanted to point out that the city does have a reduction in fees for utilities based on income, and I think it's important to keep reminding people, they may not know that, and therefore they may not apply.
Thank you. All right, would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
I will make a motion.
All right.
Let me find it. I make a motion to approve Resolution 1239, repealing Resolution Number 1237 and adopting a new master fee schedule.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Garland and seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution passes. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess before we go to our next study and give people a chance to stretch and take a little break. We'll come back at, let's call it, eight oh eight.
Okay, we're back on.
Okay. The German, or recess over, we're back for items, Item fourteen, which is a number of appointments to advisory committees and boards for the city. We put out the word for this in the city newsletter and other sources, social media. I'm grateful that we get citizens who volunteer to step up and help us in a variety of ways. It's really important. Some of these things are legislatively required, mandated. Some of them are things the city has set up because it helps the council do its work for some of the behind-the-scenes work. So I'm grateful to the people who are continuing on terms that have not yet expired, and I'm grateful to those that have volunteered, and now, so now it's up to us to vote on them. We have a procedure that we follow that tends to work pretty well. We can just, depending on the position, we'll state the names of the people that we're voting for from among the people that have applied, and so.
Yeah, so we'll put up the the screen like we've done in the past, and we'll go ahead and start with the audit committee. So there are three terms that are expiring, and then there's one vacant term. You have two applicants, so the city recorder will just randomly call city councilors, and you can state your choices.
May I interrupt real quick?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself from Items fourteen A and fourteen B. For obvious reasons, this is my last city council meeting. I will be leaving, and I have applied for audit and budget, so I'm going to recuse myself from those votes.
But in this chain, let's make it clear, there are three terms that expire plus another, so a total of four vacancies and two applicants. Is that correct?
That is correct, and you may want to appoint one of them to the longer expiration.
Okay, so that's the decision we could make.
Yes, you could.
All right, all right, so if you want to, so as we go ahead and vote, I'll ask you to say, if you want to vote for one of these applicants, say which term expiration date you'd like to apply to that applicant. Okay.
Okay, Counselor Roberts.
Both yes.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Both yes and one term expiring in twenty-five and three and twenty-seven. So we have one choice for twenty-five and one for twenty-seven?
Correct.
I understand, okay.
There will be three that will expire in twenty-seven and one that's unexpired in twenty-five, so you can either.
Both the terms expiring twenty-seven then, please. Thank you.
Counselor Huckabee.
Exact same.
Counselor Blough.
Exact same.
Counselor Garland.
I am the same as well.
Counselor Alexander.
Oh, I agree with that.
Mayor Milch.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven. And is Ryan Mailey here tonight? I know sometimes people come to the meetings.
Ryan is via Zoom.
Oh, okay. All right, well, as I see the votes with one abstention, we have six for Cook, six for Mailey, both for the terms ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-seven. So thank you for volunteering for the audit committee, and those two are appointed. The next one is for the budget committee. And we have, there are three vacant terms, two terms to expire in twenty-four and one vacant term to expire in twenty-seven. So again, you could combine them, mix them, and.
The terms will expire through, three of the terms will expire in twenty-twenty-eight, and one will expire in twenty-twenty-seven. But we have received two applications.
Oh.
Sorry, if you look up top on the, on the screen, it will tell you.
Okay, I was reading from the report, but yeah, there may have been a typo there. So two for twenty-eight, one for twenty-seven. Got it. All right, everybody ready?
Counselor Huckabee.
Both at twenty-eight.
Counselor Roberts.
The same, please. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander.
I'll do the same. Thank you.
Counselor Garland.
I'll do the same as well. Thank you.
Counselor Blough.
Also the same.
Mayor Milch.
Same for me. So Sierra Cook and Nina Harrington are both appointed to the budget committee for terms to expire in twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight. Five, six, seven, eight, four-year terms. Wow. Thank you. Item fourteen C is appointment to the Community Center Advisory Board. There are three four-year terms that will expire. Now that can't be right, so that's, that says twenty-four.
So we've received four applications for three positions, and the terms will expire twelve thirty-one of twenty-twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. Let me just ask the council, is there consensus to say twenty-eight across the board for these four people for, for? Oh, three positions. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. This is, we have four for three, so, okay.
They will all be for twenty-eight. You just need to pick three.
Start with Counselor Cook.
Bergeron, Johansson, and Latku. Apologies if I mispronounced.
Counselor Huckabee.
Gergashan, Johansson, Latku.
I'm sorry. I wanted to clarify. Counselor Cook, did I get that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Huckabee, my apologies.
That's okay. Gergashan, Johansson, and Latku. Probably mispronounced also.
The first one, was it Bergeron or Gergashan?
Gergashan.
Okay.
Simona.
Okay, got it.
Counselor Garland. I'm sorry, your microphone's not on.
My apologies. Bergeron, Simona, my apologies, Gergashan, and Johansson.
Counselor Alexander.
I will go Bergeron, Gergashan, and Johansson.
Counselor Blough.
Bergeron, Johansson, and Latku.
Lat, ah, sorry, I'm mangling your last name. Counselor Roberts.
Bergeron, Gergashan, and Latku.
Okay, so here's Bergeron and Johansson have each received.
And I have not voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Milch.
Bergeron, Johansson, and Latku.
Okay, now we're, my apologies, Bergeron, Johansson, and Latku.
Okay, so I see, yes, so those are the three that are elected. Bergeron, Johansson, and Latku are elected or appointed, excuse me. Next is our Park and Recreation Board. Three people have terms that expired this year. Now, now I'm starting to read why this paragraph is not incorrect. We're not talking about the future terms, but some of the people's terms expired this year, and some may be applying to continue to serve. And so those are the only three openings, right, for terms then that will expire four years from now. We have five applications for three openings.
Counselor Alexander.
I will go with Kate Cornelius, Robert Moore, and Nancy Turner.
Counselor Roberts.
Stephanie Carlson, Kate Cornelius, and Clayton Gasts Glasgow.
Counselor Huckabee.
Carlson, Cornelius, Turner.
Garland.
Cornelius, Moore, and Turner.
Counselor Blough.
Cornelius, Glasgow, and Turner.
Counselor Cook.
Cornelius, Glasgow, and Turner.
I'm sorry, the last one?
Turner.
Mayor Milch.
Cornelius, Glasgow, and Turner.
Appears Cornelius, Glasgow, and Turner have been appointed to terms to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight.
Item fourteen E is our Planning Commission. Staff, I'll let you present this one. It's a little more complicated than the others. There are some nuances to planning commission appointments that might be helpful to hear.
Do you want me to do that? Okay, so there are two four-year terms on a planning commission that expire twelve thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four. There is a section in the Gladstone Municipal Code, it's Section two-point-four-two-oh-two-oh, that requires the seven members of the planning commission be residents of the city and appointed by the city council on the basis of their qualifications to serve in such capacity. The section of that code states that no more than two voting members of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit as individuals or be members of any partnership or officers of, employees of any corporation that engages principally in buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit. In your staff report, you have a breakdown of the current members that are in there. One works for a construction management firm. One is employed as an office administrator, office manager. One is employed as a traffic safety educator, and that individual is now going to be a city councillor, so will no longer be on planning commission. You have one that also works in the construction industry, and you have one who is a current partner in an inventory service part-time. You have another who is a senior manager business process effectiveness. And you also have one who was a former city councillor who is employed in investments, who is no longer going to be on the planning commission. So with the makeup of the planning commission, you have, you have three applicants to choose from, and the terms will expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight.
So there are, there are two openings and three applicants, so vote for two.
May I?
Yes. Yes.
I, I would advocate for, so I feel like planning commission is really separate from other boards and committees in that it's, I believe it's quasi-judicial, like they're making decisions that are directly impacting people's lives, their homes, and their livelihoods. And I think that the gravity of that makes it different than some of our other boards and commissions. And looking at these applications, I don't know that the information provided is enough to inform my vote as to whether or not, whether or not they meet the standards and the qualifications to serve on the planning commission. So I would advocate for scheduling interviews with people who are interested in being appointed to the planning commission specifically just because of the, just the high impact that this, this commission has. I don't feel like I have enough information to vote.
All right, we've had that input. All right, we've had that input.
I would support that. My, I have a big goal of succession planning on a lot of our committees. People are going to leave. We are seeing people leave. And I just want to make sure we have the right people in place on the Planning Commission. It's, it's a big one.
Okay, I would disagree because we have two very qualified applicants, and you don't need to interview. Someone who's already been on there is a qualified applicant, I would believe. So why would you want to interview and keep going? And, and when do we do these interviews? When other new councillors are on here? What, what goes on? See what I mean? It's, tonight is when we pick. They're here. Everybody has the same information. We made the other appointments. Let's just make these appointments.
So we've heard from two who say they're ready to vote, two who say they would like to wait for interviews. We do have a joint meeting with the current Planning Commission scheduled for a week from today. If we wanted to do it, that would be the opportunity for this council to make that, make that decision. Other comments? Would someone like to make a motion that we could act upon?
I would make a motion that we continue with the votes.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we make our decision tonight. Tammy, would you, any, any further discussion? Tammy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Blough.
Postpone.
Postpone. Counselor Roberts.
Proceed.
Counselor Huckabee.
Postpone.
Counselor Garlington.
Proceed.
Counselor Alexander.
Proceed.
Counselor Cook.
Postpone.
Mayor Milch.
I'll vote you proceed tonight. So I believe we had four in favor of proceeding.
Correct.
So we'll go ahead. So as with the others, we have two openings, three applicants, so give two names.
Counselor Blough.
Brennan and Carlson.
Counselor Alexander.
Brennan and Stempel.
Counselor Roberts.
Brennan, alone.
Counselor Huckabee.
Brennan and Carlson.
Counselor Garlington.
Brennan and Stempel.
Counselor Cook.
Carlson, alone.
Mayor Milch.
Brennan and Carlson. So I believe that Brennan and Carlson are both appointed to the Planning Commission for the terms expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-eight.
So can I just ask why we had to read about that the qualifications are what we're looking for on the Planning Commission?
Well, I've noticed that, you know, a lot of times this, this, this application that we've used for everything asks about interests and activities, and we hear about hobbies and that sort of thing, but it doesn't necessarily apply to land use planning and some of those specific issues related. So I, I see that, I see the validity in, in Counselor Huckabee, or Counselor Cook's comment that it is a, it is a different kind of position. It has a different level of authority, and maybe there needs to be a different application devised to elicit a little more information. Also, whether or not, because we can't have more than two people who work in the sale development of, of property, it's important to know that occupation information on there, to know whether or not we would be violating that rule by appointing a third person who, who would have that qualification. So maybe a, a change in the application. Let, let me ask, Chad Jacobs, are you still online? Can I ask you a question?
I am there.
You've raised with us the issue that, at the state level at least, you noted a couple of years ago that we couldn't have someone serve on both Budget Committee and Planning Commission at the same time, because those committees are, have a little bit more direction from the state as far as how they're composed and so on. Do you want to weigh in on this conversation? Do you see other cities that, that follow a, a different procedure for Planning Commission than they do for some of the other advisory boards?
Well, so the, the issue related to the Budget Committee and Planning Commission is related to a provision in state law that limits membership on the Budget Committee for the, for the public members, not for the city councillors, but for the public members, they can't otherwise be officers or agents of the city. And so because the Planning Commission, as has been discussed tonight, exercises some sovereign authority of the city and actually making land use decisions for the city, they're, they are different from your other city boards and commissions, which are just advisory in nature. So because of that, there's a limitation on members of the Planning Commission serving on the Budget Committee. Unlike, for example, members of the Audit Committee, who can serve on the Budget Committee, because the Audit Committee is just advisory in nature. So that's that issue. I think what you're asking is actually a separate question. And, you know, how do other cities appoint members of the Planning Commission? And, and I don't know, in my experience of working with, you know, various cities across the state, that there really is a uniform approach. I think most cities do take some time. They have applications, as you mentioned, Mayor, that are specific to the, to the Planning Commission, to get some additional information about sort of the qualifications for the specific board or commission that they're applying for. So in this case, you know, what their, what is their experience or interest in land use planning. Other situations, there's just sort of involvement. There's a lot of, of focus on DEI and a lot of focus on bringing new individuals into cities to volunteer. So all those are sort of factors that various cities have looked at in my experience to say, who do we want to sort of serve on this board or commission? You know, the, the experience on the Planning Commission is certainly one of the things that people look at, but quite often, honestly, in, in a lot of cities lately, they're looking to bring new people in, you know, who haven't necessarily been serving on the, on the Planning Commission, to learn the ropes, maybe, you know, elevate to the city council in the future, to sort of have that succession planning. So that is another factor that people really look at, you know, but I, but I can't say it's uniform. Every city just sort of has their own priorities and their own, what I call personalities. So it's really sort of up to you all, what you think makes the most sense for Gladstone.
All right, thank you for that input. Yeah, a couple of us, well, a couple of the newly elected councillors and myself went to the, what they call the elected officials boot camp at Portland State University, and some of the difference in the Planning Commission from other committees was emphasized there too. So it, it's not unusual to, to get input asking it to be treated in a different way. And, and I appreciate your input on that, Chad. Did, did that help answer your question, Counselor Alexander?
Oh, no, because Planning Commission, you need to know what you're doing. If someone's got experience, why would you just push them away? I mean, you know nothing about mechanics, right? Am I going to hire you or the mechanic to rebuild my engine? And I have enough information in front of me to know the guy that's been a mechanic this long can fix the engine. You probably couldn't. See what I'm saying?
I got it. I got you. Okay, we have one more, is appointment to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. There are three terms that expire at the end of this year. We have two applicants for three positions. The newly appointed people's terms would expire in twenty-eight. So it's just whether you want one or both. I thought it was interesting. I noted we have two people with transportation engineering background who have made this application. The, this board does not typically do engineering-related work, but I thought it was an interesting coincidence that we had two people. And there may be some work required of a city in the future regarding our transportation master plan, and maybe having people with this kind of background could be helpful. But then, maybe not. It's up to us to decide. So let's, let's call the roll on, on this one.
Counselor Garlington.
Both applicants are fine.
Counselor Huckabee.
Both.
Counselor Cook.
Hurt and Ilian.
Counselor Alexander.
Both.
Counselor Roberts.
I'd like to move both forward. I just find it also interesting and worth note that they are employed by the same people, the same David Evans and Associates Engineering Firm.
Thank you, Counselor Roberts. And I also want to note that they have done work for the city before, so we would just need to be cognizant of that. The Chair of the Traffic Safety is sitting next to me, so we'll just make sure that we're being aware of that.
Counselor Blough.
Both of them.
Mayor Milch.
Both Hurt and Ilian. All right, both are unanimously appointed. I'll add one more thing not to put a downer on this. There's a book out, it's quite popular in transportation planning field called, I think it's called Killed by a Traffic Engineer, about how traffic engineering may not be the, the science that the industry thinks it is. So I'm not saying that disqualifies these people at all, but it will be interesting in an environment where we rely on enforcement and engineering education as some of the tools that helped us achieve safety on our public roads. It'll be interesting to hear from some people who, who had that engineering background. Okay, that brings us to the end of that item on our agenda. We recently had elections in our community, and we have some members of our council who will be departing. We don't know for sure yet the result of the race between Counselor Alexander and Counselor Blough. So one of you will be here in two thousand and twenty-five, and one of you will not be here in two thousand and twenty-five. And until that recount is completed, we don't know. But I want to say thank you tonight to both of you for your service. Counselor Alexander, for your four years of service. Counselor Blough, for stepping up this year and helping us. And whichever of one of you departs, I'm sure we will have another opportunity to recognize you. But Counselor Cook, you are departing us for, but now I'm going to have to say better things, but you, you chose not to, to, to run for your term.
Correct.
Jackie, did you? So I want to present tonight certification, I mean, a, a, a plaque certifying our appreciation to you, Counselor Ciara Cook, for your service to the Gladstone community. We're, we're very appreciative, and we are sorry to see you go. I'm glad that you have stepped up to do some other types of service, and I know that you will always want to share your thoughts and ideas with us. We formed a good relationship. You've, you've cared about things that are essential to this community, and I, for one, am greatly appreciative. I'm sure others are as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor Milch, just to add a little bit more on to the recount that is being done, we, we're told that tomorrow night or tomorrow day, it will be certified. We do have a meeting on December seventeenth with the Planning Commission as a work session. At that time, we would like to recognize the other outgoing elected official properly, like we did with Counselor Cook.
I think that's an appropriate way to do that. Thank you very much. We, do we have any business carried forward for our agenda tonight?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, we come to the time where we have business from the audience. I apologize to anyone present who came for business from the audience for the length of our agenda. You have sat through a lot, but we always put it at the end. That's the way it goes. So Tammy, do you have people either present or online who would like to speak tonight?
I do. The first is Hans Chazik.
Yes, come forward. And just state your name for the record.
Hans Chazik. I grew up in Germany, therefore I have a Slavic and German sounding name. I'm so sorry to keep you up here, because I just don't by intention to belabor you with this one, but the clerk in the maintenance department said, I cannot help you anymore. You have to come here. My concern is a bench here, a public bench, as a park bench. And I lived in, I'm a radiologist, MD and radiologist, and worked many years in Eugene. And I put in a small neighborhood park where I lived up on the hills, there were nothing, no bench or anything. And I went to the city and said, I would like to donate a bench. And by that time, my wife died there too. And they said, oh, yeah, that would be great. So, and this bench has become very popular. I've been friends and old neighbors and so on, that they were so thankful that I did it. And now I'm married again, I'm happy, living down by the river on West Clackamas Boulevard. And my wife, my new wife and I, bought pit walkers and into athletics and so on. We walked nearly every day around the area. And so it must be nice to put a bench for us here, you know, one day. Not that we want to die soon, but, and we found out that many of the benches are broken down there. I don't know whether you noticed it, and I have some pictures to show you. Because they're made of some cheap plastic and they break, and they're dangerous. The people can set and injure themselves. So my proposal is that we donate bench down in, what is it, the two parks, along the water.
Cross Park and Ames Park are the two.
But I would then, she said, the council has decided these benches have to be like they are now. Because I would like to have a more durable metal bench, like the one that I had in Eugene. And said, yeah, we have to talk to the council about that.
All right, I know that we have a procedure in the city for donating a, a bench and dedicating it to a, a person. And also, I just appreciate getting the feedback on the condition of the benches that are there. This is one of those things we have, as you heard from earlier in the meeting, we have a very busy public works department. And one of the things we dealt with was a, a need for some, well, I won't even get into that, but you have, thank you for bringing this to our attention. So Administrator Betts, you, I see you making notes?
Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up with Hans afterwards.
Very good. Thank you so much.
In case you wanted to see, these benches, they're, they're broken. It's horrible. Have you, have you been down there?
I haven't been lately.
They're stuck out.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Hans.
All right, Tammy?
The next is Glenda Shearer.
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay, thank you. My name is Glenda Shearer, and I'm a resident in Gladstone. There's been a lot in the news lately about Oregon public schools and staff and board members who have not fulfilled their responsibilities as mandatory reporters, and some who even suppressed reports of abuse. Several administrators and board members have resigned in area schools over this issue, and multiple school employees have been charged with abuse and cover-up. My five-year-old demeanor changed dramatically upon starting kindergarten. He was showing signs of abuse. He had bruises under both armpits, on his collarbone and forearm. I reported the suspected abuse to Gladstone Police Department, and Officer Graves, the school resource officer at the time, did the investigation. There were three incidents where the suspected abuser at a school in Gladstone physically handled my five-year-old son. I was told about one incident. The administrator only told Officer Graves about one incident. Two months later, I learned about two additional incidents. So three incidents of that person physically handling my son occurred within a twenty-four-hour period, and no one from the school contacted me. And when asked by Officer Graves why the, the administrator did not inform me, she said that stated, if I called parents every time there is an issue, that would be all I was doing. I don't understand why Gladstone school administrators not being held accountable for her duties as a mandatory reporter and for withholding information during an investigation. She withheld that information from me and she withheld that information from Officer Graves as he conducted the investigation. There was video evidence that the school district acknowledged they had and wanted to charge me nearly a thousand dollars to see it. The video was never included in the investigation that Gladstone Police Department did, to the best of my knowledge, and nor the Otis report. In the Otis report, a school administrator stated, we don't have any video. It seems like ORS 162295 tampering with physical evidence might have been violated. It's important to the well-being of this community that people are held accountable when they fail children and withhold evidence. And child abuse investigations must be conducted with integrity, no matter where the suspected abuse occurs, even if it's at the public school down the street. Thank you.
Tammy, we have another?
We have one additional online, Addie Smith. Addie, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Addie Smith. Since 2019, my son and I have faced continuous harm caused by the City of Gladstone, Clackamas County, Gladstone Police, Sergeants Towing and others here in Oregon. The continuous harm by these city, county and state agencies and Sergeants Towing have caused sleeplessness, anxiety, depression, stress headaches and extreme duress. In 2019, my son was driving my car to his home from work. The car had some sort of malfunction and stopped working. My son called 911 and Portland Police arrived. The police said they couldn't help my son and they called Sergeants Towing. The driver arrived and offered my son a courtesy tow. I was on FaceTime when he arrived and made the offer and my son accepted his help. When he got to my son's home, he claimed that his boss wouldn't allow him to release the car without paying. I was on FaceTime and both my son and I responded that he offered a courtesy tow and we accepted. The driver said, I know, I'm sorry, but my boss won't let me release the car. My son and I both demanded that he release the car and tell his boss what he had done. The driver called Portland Police. They spoke with both of us and the driver and told him this was a civil, civil matter and to release the vehicle. He called two other police departments individually. They came and they said the same. Hours passed and my son had worked the night shift and was tired. He offered the driver a hundred dollars. I was against it. The driver eventually released my car and my son went in the house and went to bed. The driver returned to my son's home in Hillsborough with Gladstone Police Officer Mark Herkamp. Sergeants Towing knowingly caused a police officer to arrive at a location with the intent to infringe upon mine and my son's rights, to cause us to feel humiliated, harassed and embarrassed, to damage our reputation, damage our financial, economic and consumer interests and to cause continuous harm. Gladstone Police Officer Mark Herkamp had no jurisdiction in Hillsborough. He aided and abetted in grand larceny. Sergeants Towing did not provide any paperwork or where to pick up the car or any information. I have not seen the car to this day. This was not a repossession. This was grand larceny with the support of Gladstone Police and the City of Gladstone. In 2019, Sergeants Towing's business, I'm sorry, in 2019, the Sergeants Towing driver and staff claimed they were threatening to arrest after stealing my car. This is the same business the Oregon Attorney General has fined nearly a hundred thousand dollars for targeting black and brown families, stealing their cars and illegal tow. Sergeants Towing claimed to have been harassed and threatened by me for stealing my car. I didn't live in Oregon at the time and they were not threatened or harassed. The City of Gladstone did nothing to hold their police officer accountable for leaving his jurisdiction and aiding in grand larceny. I am still under extreme duress from these actions. Again, this is continuous harm because I was arrested last week for harassment that I did not do for them stealing my car.
All right, thank you. Your time, your time is up.
Again, this was not repossession. The Sergeants Towing tried to run a scam and they continue to break the law with Gladstone support and the City of Gladstone Police.
Thank you for your testimony. All right, we come to, oh, is that all for tonight?
That is all I've received.
All right. Business from the council? We'll start down with Counselor Huckabee on my right.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, contrary to the last two meetings, I don't have much to say tonight, so I just hope everybody has a great holiday with your family, loved ones, whatever that may look like for you. And I guess I'll look forward to seeing you in January when the next official council meeting is.
Counselor Alexander.
Okay. Well, if, this is my last night on the dais, I would just like to say that I, God has blessed me with four great years. I've met a lot of amazing people. I've learned a lot of interesting things and got to serve the community. And I will be saying, continue to say prayers for the people sitting up here on the dais. And I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Blau.
Yeah, I also don't have a whole lot to put in this, but just thanking everybody for their ongoing support on this council and in our community. Thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Well, it's my last chance. I guess I will say, I am just so grateful for the positive experience that I've had serving on city council. Gladstone, I continue to be so incredibly proud to be living in Gladstone and so incredibly grateful for the community here. I'm from California. Don't throw rocks at my car. I'm from California. My family chose where we wanted to live. We lived in like six different cities before we decided to really put our roots down anywhere. And I'm just so proud and grateful to continue to be here in Gladstone. I want to say thank you to city staff. City staff, like I can't, I respected you before taking this position. And now, having had the chance to work with city staff, I don't know that everybody in Gladstone is aware of how wonderful you are. Sorry, well, teary eyed. But really, we're so grateful to have you. Jackie, Tammy, Haley, Marcy and John, I feel, forgive me for using your first names, but just thank you for the support you give the city every day. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Roberts.
Just want to thank you for your time on council, Sam. Yeah, not much tonight. Same as everyone else. Merry Christmas, happy holidays and look forward to being back in January.
Let's see. Thank you, Tammy Stempel, for asking for cookies. I'm going to ask again. We have a lot of people down there and it's an event at Tuck Willa once a year that the residents bring their families in. And that, that says a lot. That says a lot. I want to show you where I live. I want to, I want my family to know who I know and, and that says a lot. So I like supporting them and I hope that others in Gladstone would want to do the same. Counselor Cook, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. The quickest, what did, Mayor Milch, you'll have to reiterate what you said at the tree lighting, because it was absolutely hilarious and, and straight to the point.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I said that we usually think of the Easter egg hunt as the quickest holiday event in, in Gladstone, but actually it's the, it's the tree lighting, which happens at the speed of light.
Yes.
You know, we throw a switch and, and it's done.
And it's done. And, and our, our staff down at the community center did a great job for the whole day events that they had. And along with Mayor Milch and Counselor Huckabee, the three of us got to watch him turn that light on. And there was Santa Claus and the kids were excited and lots of fun people. So thank you, Gladstone, because it makes me real happy to live here with moments like that. And I hope that everybody has a very, very Merry Christmas, a happy holiday, however you celebrate it, and that you feel blessed on those special days, spending it with people that you love.
Yeah, I'm happy that we, that not too many years ago, this community started that tradition of, of a tree lighting and it has continued and expanded. And it is the culmination of a big day of, of events at the community center, but I'm glad it's all tied together the way it is now. Just a couple of little things. We had one of our Gladstone fifth graders, the fifth grade teacher, Tori Dowdy, who used to teach both my youngest grandson's kindergarten at the Gladstone Children, Center for Children and Families, has moved to the fifth grade at John Wetten Elementary. And she helped encourage a number of her students to apply for the position of Kid Governor of Oregon. And the Gladstone student who was nominated by her classmates, whose name is Jordan, was one of the finalists in, in that and shared her ideas of how, you know, her platform would be to, to work on awareness and, and diminishing of racism in our community. So I'm very proud of Jordan for, for stepping up and doing that. And the other three students who also applied from, from John Wetten. I had the opportunity, I got an invitation about three weeks ago to attend the grand opening of an expanded facility at the Mazda dealership on McLaughlin Boulevard. And I got an invitation and then a separate invitation came to the rest of the council. And Counselor Roberts noticed and he said, Mayor, your name wasn't on the invitation. You, you know, take a look at this. And so that little push gave me just enough incentive to get over there and see it. And I'm really glad I did. You know, we have a lot of car dealerships in Gladstone. This one is owned by a man named Irving Matthews, who has something called the Matthews Auto Group, which owns four automobile dealerships across the country. One in Florida, one in Georgia and two on McLaughlin Boulevard, the Mazda dealership and the Toyota dealership, which are next door to each other, are owned by the same man. And it was a great opportunity for them to celebrate expansion of their facilities, for, for them to express gratitude to the city officials and Planning Commission and others who, who helped them in that process of getting approval to do their expansion and for me to say some words of appreciation for a, a successful business like that, that serves this community. Mr. Matthews owns one of the largest minority-owned automobile dealer, automobile dealerships or, or systems in the entire country. And his ownership and, and, and the diverse range of employees on his staff at the Mazda dealership, and I'm sure it's at the Toyota place as well, is really a credit to our community. So I thanked him for, for the job opportunities, the training opportunities and of course, for the opportunity to buy a car, which in most cases has the name Gladstone on the back of it, which is how a lot of people know about our community. I'm grateful to all of the council who have, have worked together this year. We, we look forward to a new start, a new set of goals, a new budget for the next biennium. And I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to join two of our newly elected councilors at the Elected Officials Boot Camp, a training opportunity run by Portland State University with experienced city administrators and mayors and other folks who, who really help us get on board and know the right direction of working with staff and setting policy and knowing the appropriate roles that we play in the community. So I think we are going to start off the year very well. And next week, we have that, that joint meeting with the Planning Commission. But for tonight, I will say, I think that's everything. So I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Summer.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blau.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we made it before nine o'clock. We are adjourned at 8:59 PM.